All right, 5:30. Time to call the meeting to order. Please stand as we recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for everybody that's in attendance tonight. I hope this meeting will go rather quickly and you can get on to more pleasurable things that you might have planned later today. I'm hoping it's something more pleasurable than what you're going to witness here tonight.
No way.
Just kidding.
Is that possible?
No. It's excitement every minute here, isn't it? Yeah, okay. Gentlemen, you've had a chance to look at the agenda. And I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the...
Mayor, Sean Turner, after the item on the KDOT thing, would like to give an update of all the projects.
Oh, okay.
If that's okay with the commission?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay. Make a note to yourself, remember. Okay, I'll just add that to that. So with that, any questions on the agenda? Good?
No, I have no questions or additions.
Okay. I make a motion that we adopt the agenda. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. And you've had a chance to look at all the items on the consent agenda, A through E. Are there any questions concerning any of those items?
No questions here.
No? I'm good. Okay, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. All right. Items for commission action. Item A, consider a request from the VFW to place a statue of Remington near the 1916 City Hall. How are you this evening?
Hi, Mayor, and my name is Wendy Gold.
Wendy? Hi Wendy, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
And I'm speaking on behalf of the VFW Post 1186... 1186, excuse me, 1186, American Legion Post 139 in Mossy Kennels. We would like to request permission and your blessing to the placement of the statue of Remington. The exact position is unknown at this time. We are not requesting any funds for the statue. The funds would be acquired through fundraising activities organized by our three organizations. Any and all proceeds raised above the required amount of the statue would be donated to the Independence Fire Department, excuse me, to be used for the fire alarms, pamphlets, and any other items the department needs to promote the safety for our community. Thank you.
All right. Wendy, thank you very much for the presentation.
The only... The only thing I see that... I have no problem with the proceeding, but before its place, I think we need to look at the plan of where it would be oriented and the whole development. One of the things that was brought out from Roger Brooks is that our statues need to tell a story and see how that's going to be incorporated so that it's just not a statue, but something that identifies Remington, how significant. So somebody coming to town would know what it is and the uniqueness for that. And also the location that... You know, there's a lot of area there that can be incorporated other than the sidewalk. You know, if you want to develop an area around the flagpole, or instead of just putting it on... Out on the street, one thing that you look at in snow removal, if it's in a separate area, remote, it's not as difficult to remove snow. But if it's on the sidewalk, then if you're bringing a tractor... One of the facilities I worked for wanted all their sidewalks, six feet wide, because that was a blade on their tractor. You look at being able to remove snow quick. But, you know, I could see a dedicated area with the story of Remington and some other supports. So like before it's actually set, that we see a whole plan of where it's going to be placed, the surroundings, so that, you know, it doesn't create more maintenance or...
So right now, the motion doesn't really specify who's going to determine the location. You're proposing they bring it back to the commission, or...
I think that is part of their goal to raise money for it, that they should have an idea. I don't see that we need to develop that area for them.
Right.
But come back and just let us know before it's placed, the final concept to make sure it meets with all the other issues. And in the development, there might be, you know, handicap access to the building, some other issues that we have to coordinate it all with.
I think that makes great sense. I love the idea of a plaque, too, to explain...
Sure. Identify what Remington means to the city, to the community, and give the story of Remington, of why this statue is placed in his honor. Yeah, I think it's a great concept. Yeah? I think so. All right. I'm going to make a motion. I move to authorize the placement of a Remington statue. That'll be determined at a later date, once the funds have been raised. But the motion will be to authorize the placement of a Remington statue near the 1916 City Hall Building with the exact location to be determined once the funds have been raised. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. Item B, consider adopting a resolution rescinding a previous resolution which set a hearing date to consider condemnation of a property located at 412 North 19th Street as dangerous and unsafe. David?
Mayor, we're here tonight to recommend that this be removed from the condemned list and would like to congratulate them on their job well done and bringing a house that had a value of about $1,000 back to a usable house that's going to be put to good use.
Yeah, I agree. I got a chance to meet with Jerry and take a tour of the house and saw some pictures of before and after, and it's a very nice house. They've done a beautiful job with it. It's... I wish we had more houses in the community that looked like this. It's a good starter house, and from what I understand, it's going to be a transition house. But to all the people that donated money, time, and labor, and any other way, help rehab this house and make it a valuable property in the city, and to Jerry Brighting particularly, my hats off, and I'm sure these gentlemen feel the same, hats off to y'all, because that's a huge improvement in that neighborhood. And maybe this will encourage other people that live in the vicinity to maybe look at maybe doing some minor improvements to their property to kind of try to compete with the other houses that are in the neighborhood. So it's a win-win for all. I like it. I liked everything about it. So thanks for the tour, Jerry. Yeah.
Looks like a new home, almost. It's amazing. Can't believe it's the same house.
Yeah, no, not at all.
Yeah, I think you did an excellent, excellent job.
Yeah. Yeah. I'd live in it if I was looking for a house.
Yeah, absolutely.
But as far as I know, I'm not looking for a house. I haven't been home yet, so we'll see.
May change tomorrow.
Just kidding, just kidding.
Do you want me to take that out of the minute?
Ah, leave it in, leave it in, leave it in, leave it in. Out of the paper, please. Yeah. All right. I make a motion that we move to rescind the condemnation of 412 North 19th. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item C, consider authorizing Main Street holiday gift certificates for city employees. All right, Lacey, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Okay, each year, the commission authorizes a holiday bonus for the city employees. This year, we are recommending, instead of a cash bonus, that we do Main Street bucks for our employees' bonus. And the reason behind this is we'd like to keep... We'd like to support the Main Street businesses and keep the money local, and what better way than giving out certificates for our employees to go and purchase things locally and, you know, use our town, keep those dollars local. So in the RCA, you will see three different options. In years past, we have done primarily, I've seen, $50 in bonuses. We have scaled back on some of our other employee benefit type things this year, and we have in the budget that we could do $75 or $100. That's why you see both of those options. I'm recommending the $75 option, but again, that is up to your discretion. Do you have any questions?
So with the... Whatever amount it is, then the city also pays the withholding tax and all that, too?
Yes, we... These numbers are grossed up for withholding taxes paid by the city so that the employees would net that amount in certificates.
Okay. So do the Main Street bucks, are they honored by the grocery stores also?
G and W, yes, but Walmart, no.
Okay.
And if I remember right, there is a list of stores and vendors that the Main Street...
Seventy.
Seventy, okay. So there's plenty of options for those certificates to be used throughout the community. I used to use them, and I haven't bought any here in a while, but yeah. Okay, that's great.
Well, the amount you said you have budgeted is 75 or the $100 amount?
I mean, we're way under budget, so any of these options would fall under budget. So it's really up to you guys.
I don't know, with this year, if you go grocery shopping and you see the prices going up, I don't know how the commissioners feel concerning $100 versus a 75 or the...
Okay. I've noticed here over even the last few months, the prices have really jumped on everything. Things that I was paying $2.99 for, now $3.29. You know, they've gone up 20, 30, 40, 50 cents, at least at G and W, anyway. Same items that I was buying a few months ago. So we're under budget, and if we have that option available, yeah, I would... Yeah, I'd be more than willing to move in the direction of $100.
Well, our crews do a lot of work for the city.
They do.
And they are the ones that give us the first impression to somebody coming to town. And, you know, we definitely appreciate them, and how do we show we appreciate them? You know, that's one... This is one way. The lunch and dinner, you know, there's other things, but... So, you know, if we have the money and the budget for $100, then I would be in favor of increasing this year to $100.
Okay.
Jeff, since my wife owns a retail store, should I sit this one out? Since it could...
I don't think that's a conflict.
Okay. Want to make sure.
I don't think that would be a conflict.
Well, because some of these Main Street bucks will hopefully be used in my wife's store, so...
Well, there's a 70... There's 70 places that they can be used.
Right.
So what are the odds?
Great.
I don't think it's technically a contract between you and the city, so...
Okay. Thank you.
You could give an opinion on 69 places.
Yeah. Good, I like that. Well, thanks, Lacey. I like the idea of using Main Street bucks. It keeps the dollars floating in the community, helps our local businesses out, and, you know, hats off to the city workers. You know, they work in all kinds of weather. You know, if you're a field employee, like I was a lot of years, you work in all kinds of weather, good, bad, hot. And, you know, they're addressing a lot of issues that we have, but I see they're addressing them in a timely manner, and they're working hard to correct a lot of things that have gone kind of under the radar for quite a while. So it's appreciated by the community, because I hear from the community, and that they're getting a quick response, and they like that. So that means we're doing a lot of the right things. So hats off to the city workers, they're the ones that make everything work. So I'm going to make a motion that we authorize... I move to authorize $100 Main Street bucks, gift certificates for city employees for the annual holiday bonus. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Lacey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, employees. All right. Item D, consider a request from Home Made Easy to waive the building permit fee. David?
Hi, good evening, Mayor. We received a request from them, and they have a good story behind this. They have built one home in Independence. It was back in, I believe, 2001. It's down on Cement Street, South Cement, I'm not sure of the cross street.
Cement and Hill.
Cement and Hill. And they have the money together. They have picked a person for this house, and they submitted their plans and everything, and I prepared a building permit, and they then came and spoke to me about waiving that fee, that all the communities in Montgomery County waived that fee for the house. And Lacey, April, and I had a good discussion with them, and I believe they are here... You gentlemen can come on up, and they can... I'll let them speak to you about how they have a double mortgage on it, so that, you know, one of our things was, you know, you build this house for somebody, and they take it and turn around and flip it. And so they'll talk to you about all the precautions they have in place. Kelly asked me several questions, you know, have we done this for other people, other entities in the city? And, you know, we did back in 2001. I showed the building permit was issued, and I showed that it was not paid. However, when we look at the meeting minutes, we just see where Paul told the commission about it, offered the commissioners, you know, these are times if you want to help. But, you know, whether it was just an administrative decision then, or however that decision was made, I didn't see it in the minutes, but they didn't... They were not required to pay a building permit back then. And, you know, Jerry paid a building permit. It wasn't a large sum for what he just did on that. So those are just a few examples of what it is. And after discussing this with Kelly, you know, this is the code. If we want to waive this, this is a decision you gentlemen need to make. So Dave, we've asked him to come up here and speak to you, and he can tell you the story about everything, and you guys can ask him the questions.
All right, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Sir, please identify yourself.
My name is Chuck McFate.
Chuck, pleased to meet you.
And I am the treasurer of Home Ownership Made Easy Incorporated, and we are the ones that are making this request. We do have, as you were told a lot, that we are the owners of, and we have selected a partner family. And we work with people who do not qualify for normal home mortgages. They can't qualify for that, but they're still... We screen them, we work with them on things that they need to know to be a homeowner. We verify their employment, their employment status. And we, like I say, have a family selected. We'd like to... We'd like to get this house built and get a family moved in there. I guess I would... He mentioned how we finance the houses. We only charge the people who partner with us the cost of the actual building. At the time of closing, we do a double mortgage. We do a mortgage for the amount of the construction cost, and we do a mortgage for the appraised value of the property at that time. The second mortgage on the appraised value scales down over time, but this keeps people from moving into our house and staying a couple of months and then selling it at a profit of several thousand dollars and skipping the country, you know? We have five houses in Montgomery County. One of them is in Independence. We're glad to be back in Independence. I think it's high time that we were here, and I would entertain any questions that anyone might have.
How long have you been in existence?
Well, Home Ownership Made Easy has been in existence for about a year. We were previously Habitat for Humanity of Montgomery County. Habitat for Humanity International disaffiliated us. They were not satisfied with the progress that we made. Anytime that we did not complete a home, we were deemed to be out of compliance, and we couldn't do a home every year for a number of reasons. And so they finally just disaffiliated us. We took the option of forming a new corporation, a nonprofit corporation. We are 501(c)(3), but we were incorporated in Montgomery County about a year ago.
And how long were you Habitat for Humanity?
From 2000 or 2001. I don't remember the exact dates. We completed our first house here in Independence, I believe, in 2001 or 2002. I don't remember now.
So you've done five houses in 18 years, and that's not enough to keep them...
Yes, that's not enough for them.
Okay. Good to know. Could you do 20 more in Independence in the next couple of years?
We would like to.
We would like you to.
I would tell you that it has surprised us. One of the biggest problems that we have had in operating this program is finding partner families. You would think that we would put out some advertisement and just be flooded with applicants.
Yeah, you would.
That has not been the case.
Wow.
Has not been the case.
How could it not be appealing to them?
I don't know. Some people look at it and they say, "Oh, how many houses do you give away?" Well, we don't give away any houses.
Yeah. I'd sign up for that.
And other people think it's a scam or something. Some people just don't want to give enough personal information that we need, information about their finances, about their history, in their employment, in their previous rental, things like that. Some people just don't want to divulge that information, and so they cannot partner with us.
Is it limited to first-time homeowners, or...
Not necessarily.
No such restriction?
We don't have a restriction like that, although we did have one partner family signed up at one time, and they dropped it because they were a property owner. They wanted us to build on one of their lots. Well, the location of that lot was such that if we had partnered with them and built a house, even at our low cost, and our houses are low cost because we use so much volunteer labor, their house, on the day they closed, they would have been upside down in that house.
Because of the neighborhood.
Because of the location. But if someone were a property owner or a homeowner, and they were not able to keep up the house that they had or something, we would be glad to partner with them to try and improve that house to where it would come up to meet the standards, be suitable for them and their situation, or to get it sold and get them into a different house. But we have not done that in the past. When we first started, we set up for new construction, and one of the main reasons for that is we pick a family first and then pick the house. If you go the other way, if you get a house someplace and say, "Okay, we've got a five-bedroom house here, now we've got to try and find a family to fill it."
Fits the house.
That's a difficult situation.
Do you still require that they provide some of the labor?
Yes, yes. They are required to contribute sweat equity. I believe the figure is 300 hours. The immediate family can help on that, all of them. You know, if you've got a family of four, five people, all of their time counts. And it does not necessarily have to be contributed in the construction of that house. It may be helping us with something else. It may be helping with publicity. If we were going to be doing a mailing, for example, their time stuffing envelopes or something like that would be a contribution. Or if we set up a booth at a local event, they might be there to just tell people, tell other people what their experience has been in partnering with us, that type of thing. They also are required to have a minimum down payment, about 1% of the construction cost. But when you take several months to build a house, which that happens with volunteer labor, and most of it's done on Saturdays and so forth, they can save that up. And with the price range of the houses that we have built so far, they're in the $40,000 to $50,000 range, so we're talking about not a large amount for a down payment. But it accomplishes the goal because the sweat equity and the minimal down payment, that gets their skin in the game, so to speak. You know, they're committed. And our experience with previous partner families is they take a great deal of pride in being that, to be a homeowner, to... It's... People will do things, people will work like crazy when they're working for themselves.
Sure.
And if somebody else told them to go and do that, that's too hard. That's too much work. But when you're doing it for yourself, and that's what we do, if they're doing it for themselves, we have had experience with a family, one that I can think of in particular, teenage boy was... He was, well, going through a stage that a lot of teenage boys go through. And when they got moved into their new house, we were told that his attitude changed 180 degrees.
Wow. That's great.
How did...
Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, with $40,000 to $50,000 in a house, what size are we... Are you looking at... At this particular house that you're looking at in... As far as square footage and...
Oh, well, so far, our families have... Every family that we've partnered with is qualified for about the same size house, and they're about 11 to 1200 square feet. We are board years ago decided that we would not build a two-bedroom house. We'll only build a three-bedroom house because the resale value is so much greater for the... And eventually, they're going to want to sell that house.
Right.
So we don't want to penalize them in that regard.
So you mentioned that there were two mortgages. So the qualified owner, do you carry the paper, or do...
Yes, we carry the paper.
So then... So then, they have a monthly obligation to you and?
They make, they make payments to us just like they would to any mortgage company. A portion of each payment goes into an escrow account, and the other part goes to decreasing the principal owed on the house. And then we take care of paying their insurance, their taxes. They pick, they pick the carrier that they want. I mean, they select their own insurance, but we make the payments out of the escrow fund.
So you mentioned two. One mortgage was at the cost of construction, which, like is indicated on the building permit, the 40,000 to 50,000 range. And the other mortgage paper is based on the value of the property, appraised value of the property?
Yes.
So they're obligated to pay the cost of the construction, the 40,000 to 50,000. Then at the end, you just release or forgive the other mortgage?
Yeah, let's say, for example, that there was $15,000 difference between the appraised value and the cost of construction. And that's been a pretty typical scenario. As they make payments, the difference between that $15,000 and what they have paid gets less and less and less, and eventually it crosses, and that second mortgage is just canceled.
Okay, because that's what I had, I'd asked about the difference in evaluation. At one time, you know, the building permits were issued on the value of the construction and not the material. So, you know, when you're comparing apples to apples, building permit to building permit, looking at what men asked for us to do here, seeing how, in the day, everybody, well, I'm building the house myself, and they want the permit at the cost of material, but it didn't tie into really the financing case. But you've tied in the, the actual cost to the person is the cost to construct it, not the appraised value, so. Yeah, the, back to the issue of the cost of the building permit, you know, I think this is one of the ways that we can increase incentive for this type of project. And I, I would like for us to, on one of our work sessions, really look at a policy that we could come and address it for long term, that, you know, not only for them in the future, but if there's other organizations that want to renovate a house that's going to be returned to the benefit of a homeowner, not going to go to make a profit on it. But, you know, we, I'd like to see us discuss how we could get a policy. So, you know, you look at the time that staff spends going back to look at what had been done in the past, researching minutes, researching applications, that if we develop a policy, then it's consistent for everyone. And, you know, in this case, this is one way for us to show support for the Home Ownership Made Easy Incorporated, their project. And the same with anyone else that comes in and wants to provide aid to families in need, that we can have this developed so it's just a one-step process, and we're consistent with all applicants.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good idea, where everybody sees what's available, and they all have an equal opportunity to participate if they meet whatever requirements are stipulated, but.
I thought that my understanding of Habitat for Humanity, that you build a house and basically give it to someone. And I think a lot of people have had that, that idea. And, you know, it's a great, a great program that you can, the family buys in, and it is theirs, they have pride in it, and part of constructing with the sweat equity.
Most of the policies that we have adopted are based off of what we learned when we were an affiliate of Habitat for Humanity. Habitat for Humanity is a ministry, and we regard ourselves as a ministry. We do this because we think that it's a way to spread God's love, to help people get decent housing.
Yeah, that's great.
So I'd like, you know, in one of our work sessions, bring this up, that we can discuss, and not here tonight, but have the leisure to do it more in detail and brainstorm.
Sure, I think that's a great idea. How about gentlemen, any other further questions?
No, thank you.
All right, Chuck, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And I hope we get to see more of you, and there's the possibility of more houses popping up on the landscape here in Independence.
Well, I hope so too.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. All right, with that, I'm going to make a motion. I move to waive the building permit fees for construction of a residence at 305 North Fifth Street by Home Made Easy Incorporated. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number E, consider an agreement with KDOT for pavement replacement curb and gutter, sidewalk, and pavement markings on US 160 from 200 feet east of US 75 to 8th Street intersection. Sean, how are you?
Good, thank you. This is the CCLIP project that the city received funding for. It's basically a million-dollar KDOT grant, with the remainder of the costs being city funds. Concurrently, the city's applied for an access management grant that would join this project on the west end. We are supposed to hear, the last word I had was we would hear this month whether or not the access management grants received fun, funding. So this is kind of just the process of accepting the KDOT money. You have to enter into this agreement, spelled out pretty much in detail before you.
Okay. Would you, would you explain the, why this is two different, there's two separate programs. That's why this particular funding is under one program by KDOT, and the access management is something totally different.
Yes, it's really, several years ago, the city applied for a project that was all-encompassing between 8th and 10th Street and included a sweeping right-turn lane that would be westbound to northbound. That had a pretty significant city share because the grant, that grant also at that time had a million-dollar maximum. So dividing that project into two projects and applying for different funding pools was just an effort to maximize city funds. So in this instance, you'll still have the million-dollar grant from KDOT, and I don't have the number in front of me, it's 384.
Eighty-four.
Three hundred and eighty-four.
Two thousand.
Thousand, city share. The access management, all of the construction on that is KDOT-funded. I believe the engineering inspection are city-funded. So it's just a much less city share to do the overall project instead of, and these are rough numbers, but instead of a million-dollar grant, you'd be getting a 1.6 million-dollar grant by doing the two different project pools, so.
Okay, thank you, because someone will ask, they'll ask especially. And as far as our availability of receiving this, the access management grant, the odds are pretty good that?
I believe they are. That, that grant was, is the same type of grant that the city previously used to do the full-depth replacement project on West Main between 10th and 18th. The maximum amount of that grant is $2 million. And for this portion, I believe the city only applied for 600,000 or 700,000. So I think you have a pretty good chance of getting that because you're not maxing out that access management grant.
Okay.
With this, with this grant, in the scope of work, the northeast corner of 8th and Main, we had discussed earlier some deterioration of the sidewalk and needing some repair.
Yes, and there's been some discussion amongst city staff as well that it may be related to an underlying storm sewer issue. So this project would include improving that corner and the storm sewer that's under the roadway there.
Didn't we talk about an addendum with our current contractor to do the repairs?
We let that one out.
Okay.
We're just doing over on Myrtle, I think, fixing there by the Independence.
Okay, good.
And under Sean's advice that it was covered under this.
That's what I wasn't for sure. If we, I didn't want us to work there twice. Yeah, okay. Well, say we don't get the other grant. We have a half a block that's going to need work. Our options are either to apply for another KDOT grant or then we have to go ahead and do it out of our own funds.
Correct.
If, if we do it out of our own funds, would we be required to put that turn lane in?
No, no, you would not.
Okay.
The, if you were to undertake those repairs, I would think that that's totally at the option of the city. If you just want to repair what's there, there's some options ranging from, you know, heavy patching and melon overlay versus full-depth replacement versus doing the turn lane. But you would not be required to do the geometric improvements. If you did the other two options, the lesser improvements or full-depth replacement, they would just have to be done to meet KDOT specifications, but you would not have to do the geometric improvements.
In that portion of the road, though, that would need full-depth replacement in that whole?
For, forget to get any kind of type of design life, yes. Yeah, it's in pretty bad shape. But it's, the concrete is in very poor condition there, just like West Main was from 10th to 18th. And so it's just going to rapidly deteriorate.
What I was wondering, if you look at the sequence of work, if we get the grant, that's great to try and work it all together into one project. But if we don't have, if we don't get the grant, we need to look at Plan B to go in sequence with this grant we've got now. So you don't want to do what's highlighted in red and get it completed, and then come back and do that half-block later, trying to work in between the two. You know, this, it's kind of like what we're facing on Peter Pan. So shortly, we need to make a determination on what Plan B is so that it can be implemented and go into design in sequence with our grant. But then funding, I think you mentioned that half a block to do, and it does need full base replacement, was maybe a million dollars?
I, I'm going from memory, the, I believe the application for access management was less than a million, so we said 800,000.
Okay. So, you know, when we look at, at that, then our portion of, I'm just thinking of funding options that we have available, is our portion for the grant we have now could be combined with funding for that other portion. And, you know, one of our options could be looking at a bond for our portion, maybe. And that way, it gives us the money on hand that we were going to use for this application to be tied in to other street work or some other project. So, you know, instead of, instead of just looking at this and then looking at that remaining section, we need to start looking at the two tied together and what are options to implement, design, and tie construction in all to one phase. If we don't get our grant for the access management money, that we can just keep, we don't spend months to come back, and now we get them out of sequence, that we're tied up and?
Yeah, that'd be, that's a very good plan because it's going to be a pretty big impact on traffic in downtown.
And we applied for this a year and a half ago, right?
Correct, I believe that's correct.
Like March of 18, so it takes a long, long time to make it happen. Now, you had mentioned 800,000, but when you referenced that, that would be us not having to?
No, my recollection is?
That would just be making improvements, full-depth replacement up to that intersection without having to make a geometric improvement to the intersection.
I am going from memory, but my recollection is that was the entire project. But again, I'll have to verify that number. So Plan B, if you don't get that grant, would be less than that just to not do the turn lane and just do the full-depth replacement within the limits of the current roadway.
And you wouldn't have property acquisition.
That's what I was going to say, then we wouldn't have right-of-way acquisition. If we do the turn lane, we've got to do right-of-way acquisition. So, you know.
Got burned there before.
It's all on the city, that KDOT doesn't pay for that.
Right, so in the end, we could be cheaper.
By not getting it, basically?
Basically.
Possibly, by not getting the additional access management grant and come out a little better.
And our problem, I remember when we discussed the West Main improvement, that there was a problem of finding concrete suitable as you went east through the intersection, that the base concrete was so rotten that you had a, couldn't find a good place to stop. So we know it needs full base replacement. And it's the valuation of, if we don't get the grant or if we do get the access management grant, what's our total dollar going to be spending? That are we going to be better to not get any grant than to get a grant and then go through right-of-way acquisition? I don't know, but I think we're close enough that we really need to be prepared to move for the second portion as soon as possible.
Yeah.
It would make that intersection with us sweep the turn lane to match all those other intersections that we've approved that has that route that's easier, especially for the big trucks to make it through town. So, I mean, there would be advantages if you could get that.
There would, sure.
But would we be making that corner a lot unusable?
Yeah, but, yeah.
And if you did go, end up doing Plan B if you didn't receive funding, you can do Plan B so that you could still do that project at some future point just to make some accommodations. Maybe 10 years from now or more, but you could still make some accommodations to.
Because you'd always come back and do the turn lane?
Yes.
This seems like great news to me. It's like cause for celebration, getting the state to pay a million dollars to update the main street for us. But have we talked about scheduling at all? Is this a year down the road or?
It, I believe this is a 2020 project, if you recall.
I believe it's a 2020 project, but so we're looking at like the later half of 2020 or really early 2021 for us, because they're fiscal years.
Yeah, KDOT fiscal year runs June to June, so they call it a 2020 project, so it's still maybe in '21.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's on the Economic Development Grant from KDOT. That's almost been two years.
And it's surprising, but... And it, it's surprising, but, um, you know, a very, an average timeframe is seventeen months.
Yeah.
And why that is, is utilities and right-of-way. That's, if you can get away from dealing with utilities and right-of-way, it goes very rapidly, but you almost always have utilities. This one, this project, I don't believe we're going to have any right-of-way if we do, it'd be a temporary easement, so I think that side of it would move very quickly, but utilities are still gonna be an issue, so.
What's the condition of the water main under West Maine? Is it new or is it gonna have to be replaced also?
We, we put in.
It was installed in the nineties. It's in pretty good shape.
It's, it's PVC pipe, I believe, is that correct?
No, it's duct.
Ductile iron pipe, so. We did have some in the budget for utility relocations, I believe it's seventy-five thousand, but, but we feel we're not going to have to relocate that.
Okay. That's the only underground utility that we'd be dealing with.
It's your other, uh, storm drains and sanitary sewer crossing the road.
The sanitary sewer crossings, it's deep enough, I believe it's all in line.
So seventy-five thousand's gonna be pretty accurate, yeah.
Gas lines in there, I can't answer the condition of those.
Those aren't, we don't have to pay for that, do we?
No.
Eventually we do, but.
And, um, you were gonna give us an update on other projects?
Yes, um, just running through the ones I've jotted down here, the twenty nineteen overlay project, um, as you know, Tenth Street's been milled for some time, Hecker, uh, construction that's laying the asphalt is supposed to return Monday, and they'll spend several days cleaning up Tenth Street. They have some more work to do on Laurel, and then there's some additional patching to do for the street department. So, uh, I doubt they get all that done next week, but within the next two weeks, with decent weather, they should, should complete that.
Okay.
Then the ADA project, they're currently at Fifth and Myrtle, uh, they're going to be doing the work around the courthouse next, and then there's this pretty significant work around right at, uh, adjacent to the courthouse. Then the current plan from the contractor is, uh, to move to, uh, near Annie Mae's, do that work, and then their remaining work would be at the Park and Zoo. There's quite a bit of sidewalk work to do out there. Peter Pan, uh, that project just, just began this week, really just doing, starting with traffic control B. The general on Peter Pan is also Graham Construction that's doing the ADA project. The, the significant sub on the Peter Pan project is Muller Excavating, uh, from Coffeyville. Muller is actually going to be doing the, the demo, the earthwork, the granular stone base, and the storm sewer, so really the first bulk of this project is going to be Muller. So we were a little concerned about the timing of the two projects together, but with that significant subcontractor, it alleviated some of our concerns.
And that project was projected to be ninety to a hundred and twenty days?
Yes, so you, we know how that is working this time of year, and there may be, uh, extensions if winter, if it's a terrible winter, it's not uncommon to have a win, total winter shutdown, but we don't think that'll happen. Uh, our, our hope is that Muller's works pretty quickly here early on, where they can be pouring, uh, concrete here later this winter, if that's what allows, so.
And as far as access to LaBette Health Clinic, that's not gonna be.
Yes, so there has been some discussion about, uh, access for their MRI, uh, truck to be able to get in and out. They need both entrances, so we're working with them to work that out, whether it's temporary gravel or some type of temporary surfacing, we're still working out with them whether or not the MRI truck can travel on gravel, 'cause we've ran into that issue before for insurance purposes, so there may have to be some type of temporary surfacing.
Okay.
Their, their truck, uh, I believe, and Kelly, you can remind me, every Friday is that, they need access for that truck. And we're working with them and the contractor to make sure that schedule works.
And you indicated there was gonna be at least one Friday when they're doing the pour, that they probably won't be able to accommodate it, but they'll know that ahead of time.
Yeah, for, when they, when they do pour the concrete, just cure times, there's no way that they, they're gonna have to at least miss the one Friday, and we'll, of course, right now, working this time of year, we don't know when that day is, but we'll stay informed with, keep them informed so that they know what's happening with the access.
Now, was there also a geometric improvement on south of there at the Peter Pan and West Maine?
That's exactly right, that's in design right now, so we're, uh, getting the geotech scheduled and, and doing the survey work and other work to determine if the white topping is still the best solution, and then if it's not, then we will, would do the asphalt overlay for a, over a bigger footprint in that same general area.
And then there was some, uh, question about, um, they did, um, an asphalt lane from the, from Caney, the four-way stop in that vicinity, all the way back to the city limits on West Maine. So with this geometric improvement, will we be, will we be meeting, uh, buttoning up to where that pavement is, has been laid?
If we, if we do the white topping, we won't be going out that far, just because we will max out the KDOT grant.
Okay.
And the city share, if we don't end up doing the white topping and move back to asphalt, it would be enough to go that full, all the way to the city limits.
Okay.
And, and hit the, match the KDOT overlay, so.
Okay. And I hadn't noticed that section to where it meets the, the city limits on the west end, how, I guess I hadn't paid attention what the condition of that road is from that point west of that intersection.
Well, that, there's a piece in the city limits that, right at the, it's really rutted, right at the, uh, intersection, it's less rutted as you move on, but it still needs a melon overlay.
Okay.
And then eventually you'll, you hit where KDOT has, has done their project.
Okay.
It is in need of a melon overlay, yes.
Okay. And this is scheduled for twenty twenty-one?
It's, it's twenty twenty also.
Twenty twenty also, okay.
Which still encompasses, could be twenty twenty-one. That, since that is mainly a surfacing project, it will move much faster. We're, we're working within the, the curb limits, so we're not impacting utilities or right-of-way.
Okay.
How much more would it be if they did the white topping to connect to the white topping and asphalt to the city limits?
Um, we can do a cost estimate on that, I, I don't, off the top of my head.
Would you like to know that?
No.
In case you want to expand, expand that, if they do the white topping and connect it up to the other asphalt?
We can do an estimate for both white topping and asphalt melon overlay because those.
Would you like that?
That's, that's not hard to do.
Yeah. Yeah, and let's see which, which we can work out. Would be nice if we could, we could meet for the overlay ends and we could pick up from that point on, 'cause somebody will ask, why did you stop?
Mm-hmm.
Why did you stop and you didn't, uh, melon overlay the last eight hundred feet, whatever? 'Cause I know that, they'll, they'll ask me that.
Simple solution, just why do you have a hamburger instead of a steak? Money.
Money.
Yeah, money, if you got the money, you can do anything you want.
Yeah.
And without the money, you gotta just go as far as the money'll go.
Yep.
And it does get, I know, confusing, talking to the public about the different pots of KDOT money in particular, because it is, it is complicated.
Yeah. Okay.
Did you check to see if KDOT has a, a walkway grant program?
Uh, for trails or?
Well, with our corridor access management agreement, since West Maine is in it, can we apply for, uh, a sidewalk or a walkway?
You, you can apply through the access management for sidewalk and walkway, yes. I don't.
There's a lot of pedestrian traffic on, on West Maine and the sidewalk ends somewhere around Quality Motor, I believe, and people are walking in the roadway, and if we could get corridor access management money to extend the walkway out to the intersection of, of West Maine and Peter Pan Road, you know, it's just, I'm afraid sometime, eventually somebody's gonna get hit, and, you know, it would be.
Yeah, we'll look at that. There's also another type of grant that I'll look, look at, that's called the TA, it's Transportation Alternative, and we can discuss it with staff, but it's for trails and sidewalks. It's very competitive, but I think that's a pretty good project, too.
Yeah, it is.
You know, and even some of those walkways like there, if you go a little wider than four feet, you know, five feet, that a scooter, little wheelchair scooter could go to get it out of the roadway, too.
Yeah, I don't, I, I've seen that actual path worn in some, on the grass in some of those areas you described, and I don't know if, uh, they call it a multi-use path, which it's eight foot wide, would fit in the area economically, but that may be an option.
But I, I think a few years back, they were having trouble with people applying for access management money, and, you know, that would definitely, I, I think it would be a high priority for KDOT to wanna get pedestrian traffic out of the roadway.
Yeah. So. It does seem like a, a good goal for KDOT to pursue, doesn't it?
Yeah, so it might be a, a plus and.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
And the other project, and you, feel free to ask any questions, but.
We had, uh, talked about at one time about, with this access management agreement, about there'd be funding available for, to do some alley repairs at Border Long, and 'cause we knew, we have got about, what, three, at least three blocks of North Pan that are in terrible shape, Mikey's and behind Wilson County Clinic now.
And we did apply for two.
Okay.
Access management projects. One is the alley you described.
Okay.
And the, the other is the sweeping right turn lane, so we have, and the last word I had is we'll hear this month on those applications.
Oh, okay.
Both applications.
Okay.
And another application, um, is the Maple Street Cost Share.
Mm-hmm.
We, we, the city did not receive funding for that project, and, uh, we did have some discussion with KDOT afterwards. Um, safety and economic development are really paramount, so we, city staff had a discussion about looking into crash data, uh, to, to re-up the, uh, application.
Okay.
We can reapply at any time, but, uh, just put some more effort into the safety and, uh, and economic development side of things, so.
And also partnering with other entities possibly.
Yes, yes.
And what's the, what's the allocated share between KDOT and city on those as far as percentages?
That, that's, um, well, next year, it'll be a minimum fifteen percent match, but the more you put in, also the more points you get.
I think we've been in twenty-five.
This year, they actually had more funds, but, and to qualify for that extra funds, you had to put in twenty-five, but next year, it turns into more of an annual program, and the minimum is fifteen percent.
Okay. So that would, that would go for the alley improvement, too, we'd be looking at a twenty-five percent, or that would be different?
You, you could apply for that under the cost share also, but right now, that's under access management.
Okay, so that's, that, is that what, ninety-ten?
It's, it is a, it's a, it's ninety-ten, up to a two million dollar maximum for construction only, they don't pay any other costs.
Right, okay. And didn't, didn't that cost come out to somewhere around two million dollars?
Yes, it was a pretty healthy project.
For, for alley work?
Uh-huh.
Of course, there's a lot involved in.
Yeah, it's a pretty long.
Yeah.
Project, so.
Yeah, okay. And all these projects that are pending, we'll actually hear, hear before the month's up, then?
Yes, we should.
Okay.
We should.
So have a better idea of where we're gonna go and how we're gonna get there. Okay?
Any other questions on those?
No.
Thank you.
Sean, thank you very much for the presentation.
No problem, thank you.
All right, with that, I make a motion that we move to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the Secretary of Transportation, Kansas Department of Transportation, and the City of Independence. Do I have a second?
Well, second to motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item F, consider bids received for the purchase of two sanitation trucks. Mike, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Andy, I think.
I received bids at two o'clock today for the purchase of two eleven-yard trucks, and there were twelve bids that came in, they ranged from one eighty-nine, five forty, clear up to two seventy-five, two forty-six, and they all were comparable, they all met specs, and that left the low bidder at one eighty-nine, five forty with Elliott Equipment for twenty, two twenty-one, two twenty-twenty-one freight liners with new way beds in the eleven-yard form.
Okay, and these were equipped with, uh, rear lift mechanism for?
They got a cart tipper on the back and they have the, the dumpster.
Dumpster and the pull cart.
Dumpster lift, they can do same thing the big trucks can.
Okay. And we got a decent amount for a trade-in?
Sixty thousand for two trucks.
Considering the age of the truck, and that's quite a long, uh, time to hold on to a truck, probably exceeds the, our maintenance costs were probably pretty excessive being.
Right.
Uh, how the sanitation trucks operate and over a span of.
Two trade-ins were actually spares, but yes.
Okay, looking at a sixteen and a thirteen-year-old truck.
Right, mm-hmm.
Yeah. And if I understood right, there's enough, there's enough cash on hand, uh, that rather than making a lease payment, we would just pay outright cash from, from funds in the sanitation department?
That is my recommendation, we will have to amend our budget, but that's what I would recommend.
Okay, and we have, we have that cash on hand to do that, so that's not a problem. Okay. And, um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else I was gonna ask. Um, I got the difference in mileage, um, two, two mi- I'll say this right, two miles a gallon.
Two miles a gallon on the twenty-five yards and these trucks get.
And six miles.
These trucks average six.
Wow.
That's amazing, isn't it? Two miles per gallon.
So basically, it's just, you can see the gates just go.
Well, yeah.
All day long.
You got a hundred-gallon tank on it, it takes it a while to.
To do that, but you can sure track it.
Sure. It's tracked, it's tracked whenever they fill up mileage and all that.
Okay, and I know, uh, we're, we're looking at some other processes down the road about sanitation, so, um, but I know other, part of the other process was CDL license drivers.
Right, right, and those trucks are non-CDL.
Right, and that was the purpose behind, uh, moving, acquiring these trucks.
Do they allow them to?
Because, uh, there is a, a healthy competition for CDL drivers.
Yes.
This way Lacy could help cover if necessary, right?
Yeah.
No? Never heard you say that before.
Yeah, they, um, I seen the paper around here, they're averaging any of her from seven. Yeah, they, um, I seen the paper around here, they're averaging anywhere from seventeen to nineteen dollars an hour to start.
That's correct.
And, and if you, um, I know I have someone, a family member that's in the business and he has a couple of dependable guys, but I think he's paying them twenty, of course, he's not paying them any benefits.
Right.
But I think he, he's paying them probably twenty-two dollars an hour. They are dependable and they show up and they're, they're, they're good with the trucks, you know, they treat it like their own, so.
Right.
Which means something, but I know there's a lot of competition for, for not only CDL, but, you know, over, over the road truckers. They're short everywhere, so I can understand, uh, even if you have the equipment available, if you don't have anybody to drive it, you know, what good is it gonna do you?
That's right.
If you can't find anybody to, to operate it, then it just sits as a piece of equipment.
It's true.
So, anyway.
Maneuverability will be much better on, on these smaller trucks.
Yes, maneuverability and, and weight, you know, tearing up the alleys and streets, curbs. These trucks are a lot lighter.
They can make the radius into the alley and not go over yards.
Right, we hope.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of that's driver error.
Hopefully the driving skills are a little sharper.
We hope.
I found out what you, what happens when you're on the riding mower and hit their ruts.
Yeah.
Yeah. You only do it once or twice.
Once, yeah, and then you know.
Yeah. Yeah, it should, the smaller truck makes, uh, a lot of sense in the residential areas with, uh, the restrictions in the alleys and the conditions of the alleys, gonna cut down some deterioration and.
Right.
You look at capacity versus trips and mileage and fuel, so it makes, makes a good decision to go to a more appropriate truck.
Right.
Yeah, I, um, I know, I know for 2020, we'll be looking at this in a broader sense, uh, as far as sanitation services.
Right.
But this, this fills a need that we need to, to meet at this time. And in regards to when I talked to you earlier about the size of the sanitation trucks, um, we're always gonna have two twenty-five yard.
Two twenty-five yards.
Trucks on hand.
One for commercial and one spare.
One spare, so we'll never, ever be able to get away from that.
Cause they're required for the dumpsters?
The dumpsters. The commercial truck runs most, mostly dumpsters.
Right.
Six days a week.
Yeah. And then right now, the other comment that you made to me was that we actually have, in the sanitation department, we have three certified CDL drivers and we've just brought on, uh.
Another one.
Temp.
Right.
That's a CDL holder, uh, because with these three drivers, you don't, you don't have any backup.
That's right.
So if someone's sick or, yeah, then you're just, you're just, oh, I almost said something I didn't wanna say. Anyway. I can say it in letters, but I'm glad I caught myself.
Larry could bleep you out.
So, yeah, so this will at least give them some relief.
Yes.
With a backup driver and, and hopefully he likes, uh, he likes working for the city and he'll have a chance to become a.
Full-time.
Full-time employee, so. But I understand it's a, it's a big competition when you don't have enough qualified drivers or people willing to step up and be a qualified driver, CDL holder.
Right.
And then you're competing with, uh, you know, the private industry that's paying considerably more an hour, plus whatever benefits they offer, um, to acquire a CDL. So I can understand, so. That, that takes from all the questions I had, so.
Yeah, well, from now until the end of the year, we're gonna be short on time, but maybe after the first of the year on a work session, we could, uh, have time to discuss some of the, what would you say, broad, long-distance planning, some things, you know, there's a lot of.
Parameters?
Yeah, you know, we've, in recent years with the FEMA, the demolition, the condemnations, you know, we're, the age of our streets, uh, there's so many things that are changing that we haven't really had a time to sit down and let's brainstorm, let's look where we can go, how we can accomplish, so we just don't keep banging our head against the wall, you know? We're, we're waiting, you know, till crisis mode at times and, you know, I think there's some changes that we've, we've done that we haven't stopped to look at, at what's happened and the benefit. And we were talking this afternoon and just like, uh, Lacey mentioned, we're buying the, the vehicles out of cash on hand. In the past, we were financing most of the vehicles we bought. I don't remember any time we really did it, but you look at how much we're saving in interest by, by doing this, and that's more money that can be invested into the community. And, you know, maybe we look at one or two trucks and say, well, that's, that's not significant, but when we were talking this afternoon, you look at maybe four or five vehicles that I could think, large vehicles that we're buying with cash on hand. It starts adding up pretty quick that, you know, there, there's some things we can look at maybe together, long-term of how we can address some, some issues or prevent issues or just kind of planning session. So after the first year, maybe we could look at one of our work sessions with that.
Yep, I agree.
We usually do that planning retreat also, I think, in about, around March.
Yeah.
Okay.
You might wanna do a preliminary one.
I think, well, what I see is discussion would be a forefront for the retreat of financing that, you know, we look at, at the organization, some things that might need to, to happen to, to address the issues that can take pressure off of the department heads or supplement them.
Okay. That would help me in budgeting also. About a month earlier would be more helpful than March.
Do what?
I said that would help me out with budgeting as well. About a month earlier would, would give me a lot more time to implement all of those discussion items into the budget.
Well, Gary, it's been a few years back, at one of the league conferences. Remember the handout that that, was it Manhattan? That they really started some of this discussion, and this is similar.
Like in January.
To what they did, right. So, you know, we're all working together, we're all putting, a- and it's not trying to digest everything, you're not trying to guess or what we're thinking and we're not trying to read minds, but it's an actual, their schedule, uh, really offered, uh, a lot of direction for the, the budget. It was laying groundwork from January that concluded in August.
It was amazing.
I think I might still have those notes.
I think I do too.
Maybe we can get copies to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, make a copy to me.
Okay.
So I don't know what you're talking about.
If you want to send it to me, I can send it out.
Okay, that would be great.
Everybody.
So I don't know what you're, you are referring to. Yep. Great. Okay, Gary, you have any other, any questions about this?
Fantastic. I love it.
You're good?
I'm good.
I'm good. Lacey, Mike, thank you very much for answering the questions and the presentation. So, moving on, I'm gonna make the motion that we move to accept the bid from Elliott Equipment in the amount of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty dollars for two eleven-yard rear loader sanitation trucks, which include trading in the two thousand and three and two thousand and six twenty-five yard rear loader sanitation trucks. Okay. All in favor signify by.
A second.
No, I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
Just wanted to get that in.
Sorry. Got in a hurry. We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, the item four, discussion, consider discussing the November twentieth and twenty-first commission meetings.
I wanted to check with you gentlemen to see, um, if you wanted to have both these meetings next week. We've already reached out to the Economic Development Board about meeting with them at nine o'clock, um, that day. Jeff can't do the orientation that day, so their orientation will, we will schedule at a later time for their first meeting. Um, I'll get with Jeff on his schedule, um, but I believe you wanted to, to visit with them and kinda set goals and direction for them. Uh, we have a few items for the twenty-first meeting, but we could move those to that twentieth meeting and not have the twenty-first meeting. There is a MAC meeting on the evening of the twenty-first, um, in Cherryville. If anybody is, if, if you don't have that meeting, if you're interested in attending that, let me know. Um, actually, I think the deadline was today, but I contacted Tricia and told her we would have to let her know tomorrow if we had anybody that wanted to attend that, if you decided not to have that twenty-first meeting. There is one public hearing on the twenty-first, it's a person that, uh, lives in Florida and Davis would try to contact them and also, uh, send a letter out, but it's somebody that signed off on a, on, um, their house being demoed or something, so there's not an issue with that. We can just adjourn that to your next regular meeting, would be that December twelfth meeting, I believe.
Uh, the November twentieth was just strictly Economic Development Advisory Board.
Yeah, and you were gonna check at one time to see if Nikki was available to come down during that meeting, but you could also set a special meeting for when she comes down. I don't know what her schedule is.
Right.
But whatever few items we have, like appropriations or whatever, we could add to that meeting, keep it light, um, for that morning meeting and not have the twenty-first meeting if you want to, unless you wanna have two meetings two days in a row, and that's certainly your prerogative.
Boy, it would be nice to get them all done in one Wednesday, the twentieth. We're already here. Um, yeah, I would, I would definitely be in favor of that. Not that I don't, being here on Thursdays, it's just.
You love being here, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think so. Um, and then I'll, I'll cover that with Nikki here a little bit later in the meeting.
Okay. So would you be comfortable going ahead and canceling the twenty-first meeting?
I, I don't have a problem with that. I'm good with it.
We're all good with it.
Okay, we'll, we'll need a motion, cause it is a scheduled meeting.
Okay, so I make a motion that we counsel, uh, cancel the November twenty-first, twenty nineteen, uh, five thirty PM Thursday, uh, city commission meeting. And we will take up the duties of, uh, what would be on the agenda on Wednesday, November twentieth, twenty nineteen at nine AM.
Right, correct.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
So the whole meeting Wednesday is a commission meeting?
Meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
That gets your two monthly, your second monthly meeting.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and, okay, item B, consider discussing a commission orientation and facility tour. This concerns the nineteen sixteen city hall.
Uh, this, this one doesn't. This is the, uh, one we do with the newly elected officials and last year you and I went on it. And I have your pictures on here, so I can remember that.
They don't look like me.
Um, I've talked to Dean and he's pretty excited about doing this tour as well, but I've also talked to some other commissioners, they thought possibly it might be a good thing to do as a commission group and not just the elected officials, so that they can all go through and, and review the utilities as a group, or I mean, the facilities as a group. Um, so I just kinda wanted some feedback on how you want me to set that up. And then I will work towards getting that scheduled. Last year we did it, or two years ago, we did it in December, so I anticipate it'd be sometime in December.
December, okay.
And I can check your availability and see when you wanna schedule that.
Yeah, I'd like to go and look at the facilities again, just to see the transition in two years. I always spend a lot of money in some and it gives me an idea of what the condition are in the others, so if it's okay, I'd like to go.
Yep. I mean.
Enjoy.
Okay, all right. You sneeze, you lose. Well, yeah.
So I will set that up with you two and Dean, and it will be a special meeting, cause we have a majority of the commission participate, so.
Yeah, it'll be fine.
I'll get that scheduled.
Okay, moving right along, uh, reports. Item A, third quarter treasurer's report. Lacey, again?
All right, you guys have had a little over a month, I think, to look over this.
Yes.
I'll just go over, um, the deficits for now, and then if you have any other questions, just let me know. Um, fund ten is the water treatment plant upgrade. That has a twenty-three thousand dollar deficit. That is actually just, um, the amount of a reimbursement, a reimbursement that we have requested, um, that's still pending, but, but that disbursement has been requested. Um, the next one is, looks like the airport.
Airport.
Fuel system upgrade. Um, that is also a reimbursement that we are waiting on from, uh, the FAA and we, it has been submitted and I am in the process of following up with them. Uh, they requested a few more pictures, but I anticipate that we'll receive that here pretty quickly.
Okay.
And then the last one is the Peter Pan geometric, um, and that is an ongoing project. I think that's design fees.
So you've identified or included the, uh, extension with the geometric?
Yes, so.
So, until that whole thing.
Yes.
Is completed, we'll be looking at it as titled, the geometric?
And, and that one actually has the first extension in it also, so it's, it's the geometric, the first extension, and now the second extension.
So geometric and extensions?
Mm-hmm.
And that's three hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
No, it's four thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy cents.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, gotcha.
So with, uh, with that project, uh, the extensions being a, a shared project with two other entities, are they gonna be billed periodically or just at the end of the project?
Probably just at the end. Um, I need to meet with them both again, um, and discuss how, how they wanna receive it, and I, I am planning on giving them, you know, updates and reports on the progress of the project, so it's just a discussion that I need to have with them here coming up pretty soon.
Yeah, that would probably be easiest, cause it seems like on the, the street projects we've had before, that at the end, it's the closeout where they're confirming and.
My guess is that's how they're gonna wanna see it.
Documenting.
Yeah.
The actual contract amount can go up or down, and it would be a lot easier for you to only deal with receiving and not receiving and refunding.
Refunding, yes.
Okay.
Um, other changes on this report, you'll see that all of our funds now fit on one page. I, um, any funds that had leftover money, I transferred back to the originating fund of where it was funded from. Um, so I've cleaned this up, closed funds that are obsolete, no longer in use, and if a fund had zero in it, I just closed the fund completely, so you don't see it on here anymore.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
On the, the next page, Kansas Public Water Supply Pollution Control column, the southeast lift station, this is the amount of our final agreement with them for our loan?
No, that, that's the balance that's been paid on it, or paid down on it.
Yes.
Okay, this is how much we owe on the loan?
Correct.
That's what I.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there was a lot of questions in the past whether we drew down or what, so this is actually what we've remained owe, okay? And then you're doing the same with the water treatment plant upgrades, that, as we draw down, that fund will, that amount will increase until we complete the projects under that, and then it'll start decreasing as we.
Yep, so that amount is the first disbursement request that I submitted was for that six hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And the next one was about three hundred and something thousand.
I think on that second loan, I think the payments actually start in the latter half of twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Yes.
And in those two plans, is there a forgiveness that KDOT will actually write off some of the loan as it ages, or?
They have done that in the past. You never know if they're gonna do it, or how much they're gonna do, but we have had that occur in the past.
In the liabilities, you just combined all the, the bonds into that one amount and still listing each one?
Yes.
From me, thank you. I appreciate it. This is what I, you, you provided answers to my questions. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from that one?
No, no. Lacy, thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Okay, any, any other questions? We're all good? Okay. Moving along. Uh, item C, two twenty-three West Main Street update.
Do you wanna know about sales tax?
Sales tax.
I'm sorry.
I don't have much to say, other than it's up.
I'm sorry, I went right over that. B, October twenty nineteenth, sales tax report, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Um, this was just another report that, um, I think it was said that you all wanted to hear formally. I don't have much more to report than, than what's in the, the packet that gets sent out, other than sales tax is up. Um, so great thing, cause sales tax helps fund um a lot of our operations. Um, it's a direct impact on the general fund, so the more sales tax that we collect, um it lessens the burden of, you know, property taxes, so um this is great news that our sales tax is up again.
The significance of this is that you plan so much money coming into our budget from sales tax, and the thing we should watch is how that progresses, that if we start getting less sales tax revenue, then we're gonna have to make that money up by changing but expenses.
The good thing, though, yes, is, I mean, I think historically, we have not been aggressive in our budgeting of sales tax. I think it's pretty common that we um exceed our, our budgeted amount. Um, you know, I don't have plans on significantly increasing the, the budgeted sales tax receipts next year, um just because it is a gamble and, and, you know, we would be in trouble if, if we didn't meet those projections, so I, I don't see that as something, you know, I don't think our projection's gonna go up a lot.
Okay, so for us?
See, it remained the same since, over last year. Any questions?
Okay, I'm good. How about you? Thank you, Lacy. Uh, item C, two twenty-three West Main Street update. David?
Mayor, I spoke to Mr. Morrison yesterday. Uh, he, it's still at the Fire Marshal's office. Uh, he anticipates it to be back and probably be presenting it to the city first part of December.
Okay. And as far as the, I understand the, the Brew Works is open and everything's going good and?
Yes, yes.
And I hope he makes a ton of cash.
Yep.
Hope so.
Yep.
Tons of cash, they're able to market the beer and sell it regional and make beaucoup amounts of money.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So the Fire Marshal's reviewing the fire alarm and sprinkler drawings, but you haven't received any of the other?
No.
Information, no letters or anything addressing the life safety, fire prevention?
Haven't received anything. He indicated, Leonard, that uh he would provide everything at once.
Okay.
So when he turns it over, we will receive everything we requested.
Okay, and he indicates first part of December.
That's what he anticipates, so.
All right, thank you, David. All right, item D, uh city employee appreciation luncheon.
And the department heads and with, uh, some employees are planning the appreciation luncheon. We did a, a survey of whether they wanted the evening function with the families or an employee-only function during the day, and they selected on basically a two-to-one vote that they wanted the uh employee-only type luncheon. So that is gonna be Friday the thirteenth, so hopefully that's not a, at least we'll remember the date. So um we're gonna close City Hall at noon that day, uh for the employees to participate. We have uh several people that are gonna be getting awards, and we'll do some drawings and games, and we're gonna try to have some local foods for different um local uh restaurants for the employees and, and to enjoy, and, and local gifts and things like that, and trying to, the whole theme is about a hometown holiday, so just keeping everything local. So um you're all invited to attend that, and uh usually the mayor helps us present the uh service awards. So um if you have any questions, just wanted to let you know about it, and we'll be doing some drawings and different things. And I'll start it at noon, and we will invite the, the retirees as well.
Now, I'm not dressing up, required to dress up as Santa, Santa Claus by chance, am I?
Only if you volunteer.
Okay, I'm probably not gonna volunteer.
Well, it's employees only, so.
Oh, okay. Well, I would, I would be.
Yeah.
Drop in guest.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you, Kelly. Uh, item E, November sixth, twenty nineteen, city-county meeting update.
Uh, yes, we had a city-county meeting on the November sixth, and these were the items that were on the agenda, and I'm gonna have Lacy come up and go over the, the first item, just to give you a quick um recap of what that was about.
Um, okay, so this first item really deals with how um the tax sale process works. Um, basically every five years, if, if you have five years of delinquent taxes, your proper, property is eligible to go on the tax sale list. Um, if, currently, if you realize that that's gonna happen to your property, and you go in and you pay one year of property taxes, it goes on the oldest year and takes you off of the list. And then we only have tax sales every five years, so you now have another five years that you can not pay your property taxes. Um, this is an idea that Fred Gress brought uh before us, and basically, the idea is to change the way that we apply payments, so that if you come in and you pay a year of property taxes, it's assessed on the most recent outstanding year. And so by paying one year of property taxes, you can't avoid uh your property going to a tax sale. Anything else, Kelly? Oh, another thing we did talk about is the possibility of um instead of having the, your property taxes um made in two payments during the year, easing the burden of, and making it a quarterly payment was also a discussion item.
So I don't remember hearing this before, so if somebody is five years behind, they go in and pay one year's taxes, they've got another five years, so they could be nine years behind on their taxes?
Or is it three years?
Actually, they're supposed to have a tax sale every year.
Well, we don't.
Well, no, I think, I think they have it every other year, because it's quite an undertaking.
For every three years, yes.
Yeah, well, I think they do it every other year.
Okay.
Um, it's a, and that's how a lot of properties appear in your condemnation.
Right.
They get turned over, and people don't pay their taxes, and they end up, anyway. But I'm not sure I understood. I read about that in the paper, and a reflection on reporting the paper, but I didn't understand the proposal myself, but if you, if you're five years behind, your, your property goes on the tax bill. And it basically, to keep it off, you just have to do it so it's not five years. I don't know how paying the most current year, it's, as opposed to the oldest year, makes a difference, but Fred had an angle, I, I just didn't understand it.
And it's, there's another community, Kelly and I can't remember which, that kinda spearheaded this.
Was it Winfield?
Winfield.
Was that the papers?
Was it?
Scott City?
Scott County?
Yeah, I mean, these are all state statutes.
Right.
Don't, and it has to, it's a county-wide thing, it wouldn't be city by city.
Right.
So it's not really something our City Commission could do much about, except say, yeah, we're in favor of it, but.
Yeah, either the county can't decide that they've gotta change statute to?
There are certain things you can do under Home Rule and Charter, but my understanding is if a state statute applies to, to every county across the state uniformly, you can't opt out of it. So I don't, I, I probably needed to be there to understand it better.
The, there is, I think Fred was gonna get with Scott County to see, they had a proposal that we saw that made it, to me, made it look like you could do this under like a Home Rule type thing, but we didn't, we didn't think that you would be able to. We, we think it's something that we'd have to take to Topeka and get legislation changed for. It was, was our stance on it.
Okay.
Yeah, quarterly payment would be, would be interesting, but December one's always bad timing, unless, you know, just if, you know, it only affects if you've got your property paid off. If you got it financed, it doesn't matter.
Well, on commercial property it does, cause they don't usually collect that on commercial property, so if you own a bunch of downtown buildings, you get absolutely hammered. It's a huge, huge check to come up with.
Yeah, quarterly would.
Would, would be nice.
You're gonna get at the end the same, but you don't cry as much when you write the smaller check.
Yeah, it'd be difficult to change that collection system, because the collections in December go to fund governments all across the state for the next year. If you delayed the collection?
Yeah.
It'd be an issue.
You create other problems by doing that?
Depends on how you do it.
Yeah.
You could have them pay half of that December month, three months earlier.
Yeah.
They don't, you don't know what it is till November, though. Taxes don't come out till November.
No, I would've thought that you keep the December payment where it is, and you just add back.
The way you can, can convert it is you'd have to have a year, a transition, where you have to pay a bunch in advance. I don't know how that's gonna work.
Yeah, it'd be tricky, yeah.
If it's not broke, don't. Interesting.
So the next item that was discussed was the development in RFP to study consolidation nine-one-one, and Jerry and Harris is gonna take care of that, item four.
Jerry, how are you?
Good, how are you, gentlemen?
Dandy.
Not much to report. They discussed, they were provided the report that I provided to you, uh that we collaborated on with area entities, and they were also provided the exemplar report that was provided to you guys as well, to kinda give them an idea of what that study would look like, and we just requested that they go back to their legislators and um ask them to schedule a meeting with all the legislators in the county. There was some discussion of how difficult that might be, something about herding cats, I don't remember now, so anyways, but they did say, uh, they suggested that the, the head of each legislative body come in, so the mayors and the, whichever county commissioner that would be, um, get together and discuss the topic.
Sounds like a political move. When you don't wanna make a decision, you assign a task force.
Could be.
Do you agree?
No problem.
I think they wanna make a decision.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I understand exactly where you're headed. You may not wanna own the decision, but you wanna make a decision. I understand.
Yeah.
And I will send them a reminder about that, about getting back with us. I haven't had a chance to do that yet, but.
Okay.
I will get, reach out to them again. And then the next item is a, Jerry and David will tag team on that. It was discussed nine-one-one mobile mapping and vehicle tracking.
Okay.
I'll just be brief. I mean, our, Jerry does excellent job with our nine-one-one center. This is just enhancing and, you know, that kinda goes off what the mayor had talked about, us being more mobile, putting more, you know, abilities out in our vehicles. Uh, this is a, a way for us to put mobile mapping into our ambulances, fire trucks, and police vehicles if we want to. It not only, through this app, gives us the exact address, so that the, just like your phone, how you can map, and it'll take you right there. It would do that in the units. Uh, it is very difficult at times in the county to get where you're going, and it gets very technical, and I won't get into that. If you have questions, you could visit with Jerry about how the nine-one-one mapping works and why we don't always get an exact location where they're at. That is improving, and it will improve every, as they do updates, continue to improve. But not only does it help get us our emergency vehicles to the calls, it also provides us as directors, important data about our vehicles, what they're doing, how fast they're going, if an incident happens, uh, an accident happens, or if there's something wrong with the vehicle, this is monitoring the computer system in the vehicles, it reports to us instantly. Uh, you know, in October, we did three hundred EMS calls. I mean, we have never done three hundred EMS calls. Typically, you know, I can remember the days when we did a hundred and twenty a month. You know, we now average around two, two-twenty, three hundred calls in October. I mean, our trucks were constantly on the road, a lot of transfers, transports, and it just helps Sean and I to know where our trucks are at. We can call dispatch, hey, that truck that's in Joplin, where's it at? It helps us stage better, and you know, it helps our EMS coalition works together as either Parsons moving trucks here or Cherryville. It's just gonna bring a lot of different advantages to us, uh, and into our system, and we just shared that with the other agencies in the county, and there's a lot of interest by Rick Witson and Montgomery County Rural Fire, same type of issue, just being on track vehicles going on, so we just shared that information. Trying, uh, we have budgeted next year, what we call Intranet, where we're gonna put our network system available to our city vehicles throughout the city as we build this. Again, people in the field shouldn't have to come to City Hall and get a work ticket and then go back out in the field. Trying to make, be more, be able to do more work, less, be more efficient with what we're doing and time management during the day. So, I mean, we're working that, that way, and this is all part of that process.
Seems like with the technology and what you're talking about, like with the uh particularly Fire Department, where you're responding to a structured fire, and I guess you've got the flow calculations every time they flush a hydrant?
Yes.
And that data that you could be?
Yeah, our dispatcher.
Having the data on which plug to connect at the scene, uh?
They do an excellent job. That data's in Jerry's nine-one-one center, they're relaying that. Uh, if you would've heard then, we had a fire alarm at Standard Motors the other night. That dispatcher was relaying hydrants, she was giving us hazardous material, she was, all that information is being spilled out as those trucks are responding, so I mean, they do an excellent job. As they're managing, as Jerry can tell you, fifteen other phone calls or nine-one, especially if we have a structured fire. You put smoke up in town, I think everybody in the world calls Jerry's office, nine-one-one. So, you know, they're probably dealing with fifteen nine-one-one calls. Everybody calling in and say, hey, there's smoke, there's fire.
We had a fire at Standard Motor Products?
Fire alarm. I think somebody was working on a water line, which dropped the pressure in the building and set off the fire alarm in the building.
Gotcha, thank you. I was gonna say, I didn't see any smoke, or I would've called in and?
Yeah, been one of those people.
Yeah, darn right.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you. Okay, item F, December fourth, twenty nineteen, nineteen sixteen City Hall site visit.
Uh, Trainer is going to be in town that day to do their monthly meeting already, and we've had some people in the public that didn't get to go to the first time that we opened it up, that would like to look at the building, and um so we wanted to provide another opportunity. I've, uh, at the time, I put this on. I, uh, at the time I put this on the agenda, I hadn't heard from all the commissioners, but, but now that I have, I know there's only one that wishes to attend, so we will not have to require having a special meeting for this, so, um, I'll just
Okay.
It's, I believe it's at eleven fifteen, but I will double-check on that day and get with you. But, um, and I'll publicize that so that people can come if they want to see what's going on.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, I thought that at least one, one should be a representative from the commission should be there, and since we have one volunteer, then I appreciate the person that volunteered, so.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, we've gone through the city board minutes, and he, everybody's had a chance to look at those. Moving along, uh, Kelly, you have comments for us this evening?
No, Mayor, I don't, unless you have any questions you need to ask of me.
No, I, I think I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, moving along, Commissioner comments. Uh, gentlemen, you have comments you wanna bring forward at this time?
I think I'm okay, thanks.
Leonard?
No, I think I brought them as we went, relating to the items we, we discussed.
Okay. Uh, I do have some comments, excuse me. I got an email from Nikki Harrison, and I've, we've given out the, the profile document, uh, to the commissioners, she's have a copy of that. And I've also provided one to, uh, Dean Hayes, who's coming onto the commission in January. And, and I'll need to get with him, uh, this evening, but I guess what I'm, I need to find out from you gentlemen, if you've had a chance to, to do a review of all the profiles that have been submitted, if you've come up with a list of, of, uh, candidates that you yourself have, have, uh, narrowed down to, that you are wanting to consider, um, and you reached that point, you two have, and I have, and I'll check with Dean, then I need to get with, um, Nikki, and then she will get with us concerning a date and time to where, uh, she'll come down, and she will, uh, will be able to go through and review and look at, uh, look at the selections that we have in mind.
Are we going to, to meet as commission and, and narrow our list down before her, so, you know, we can just?
We could do it with her, but we could certainly do it without her, too, I would think.
Yeah, I think we need to do it without her first, so that, you know, why, why don't we narrow it down to the ones we want to interview, and then just deal with her instead of, you know, if I have different ones than you do, you know, we could end up with a list of seven or eight people.
Right.
When we talk, we could jointly narrow it down to whatever, four or five, you know, some sizable number, but if we try and do that with her here, then it just takes longer then. And, you know, we could kinda go over the list and come up with a approach, and then visit with her about it.
I think that makes great sense. I would like to include Dean also, and I will defer my choices to him, obviously.
Um, so do you wanna, um, go ahead and plan that for, uh, Wednesday? As, as an ex, as an executive session for the, being, we're having the, uh, Economic Advisory , uh, Board on that, and plus, um,
Commission meeting.
Whatever, in a commission meeting, and do that in an executive session?
Certainly would hurt.
At the end of the commission meeting.
At least get started, start the discussion, if nothing else.
Right.
And get that point moving along, and then, and then we'll see how we proceed from there, and then when we get to the point where I'm ready to notify Nikki, I'll, I'll send her an email, and then we'll start looking at dates and times where we can all, all get together and, and go through the process, so. Okay, so we will go ahead and add that part to
An executive session.
An executive session on the twenty, twentieth. Okay, okay. Okay, well, I, I will give her an update on where we're at on the process, and then I'll, I'll report back to you about, um, where we go from there. Okay, um, public concerns. Did we have anyone sign up? No, okay. Um, executive session?
We don't have one.
Oh, okay.
I just, it's kind of a placeholder.
Placehold, okay, okay. All right, then, uh, the favorite part of the meeting is coming up for me. Uh, adjournment, I make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for attending.